June 19th, 2017, 7:00 PM. All councilors are present. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand while we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, Rules of Order. We follow Robert's Rules of Order, plus rules and procedures adopted at the annual organizational meeting. This period of time, if you have a cellphone, pager, or any other device, please be sure that it's either off or silent. Item four, Adoption of the Elsa City Council Minutes from the following meetings. April 17th, 2017, regular meeting. May 15th, 2017, regular meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All those in favor? Abstaining? Three abstentions. We all missed one, for various reasons. Good. That carries. Motion carries. Item five, City Managers' Report.
We have a number of, uh, free, as in free to the public, summer activities about to get underway in Ellsworth. The Ellsworth Concert Band will be playing at Harbor, Harbor Park at 7:00 PM on Wednesdays between July 5th and August 9th, so get down to the harbor. Likewise, the Waterfront Concert Series on Fridays at Harbor Park will begin on July 7th and run through August 25th. Those begin at 6:00 PM. And at Nolton Park, the outdoor movie series will begin. It will be on Thursdays, starting July 13th through August 24th, and begin at dusk. Heart of Ellsworth, meanwhile, is selling tickets to an event called Taste of Ellsworth, which will be held this Saturday, June 24th, and run between 5:00 and 8:00 PM, down on Franklin Street. As a matter of fact, a nice view over right down through here. Tickets are $35 for adults, $15 for children, and $40 at the door. A number of local eateries will be featured at the Taste of Ellsworth, and those are the events coming up, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Item six, Committee Reports. Any councilors bringing back committee reports from meetings they attended during the last month? I attended the Harbor Commission meeting. It was pretty quiet. Things are open and working well. There was some damage over the winter to one of the dolphins that moved and some minor things. Nothing of any consequence. Tonight, we do have on the agenda the opening of another vendor for the park, which is sadly missed. We've got another brave gentleman stepping forward. And I think there's only one spot left in the float dock, and I think, from what I remember, what they said, most everything else is filled, so the harbor seems to be going well. That is what I had. Any other -- Mr. Fortier?
Rec Commission met a couple weeks ago. Did our normal business. Have recommendations coming forth for one new member of the Rec Commission. We've got interest from another person to fill the open slot, which we hopes to get both of them to hear at the July meeting. I received information today that the neighbor to the lower basketball court would like the sound curtains up. So that's been passed around the Rec Commission. I will make sure I've ordered the proper equipment to hang them, and we will get them done in the next week or so. If we can get high -- I'll get with Bernie, our highway foreman, about delivering them. We'll get that all arranged and get them done. Other than that, been a quiet month.
Any other councilors from the other meetings? Thank you all. Seeing none. Item seven, Citizen Comments. This portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject they feel they would like to bring to the council's attention. You're allowed two minutes at the podium. Not necessarily promised any answers, but we'd be happy to listen. Seeing no one jump at the great opportunity, we'll put on item eight, Presentation of Awards. First item is Michelle Gagnon, for 15 years of service with the Elsa Planning Department. She's not with us tonight. I think she's on vacation. Item two, Alan Saunders, for 35 years of service with the Elsa Public Works Department.
If I remember right, he had 35 with the Fire Department, too.
Thank you very much, Alan, for your -- We'll move into the Consent Agenda. These items will be enacted as one unless the council so desires to remove an item. Yeah, you're in charge. Thank you. Thank you. First item on the Consent Agenda. Item nine, Council Order 061-700, Request of the Deputy Finance Director to set the real estate and personal property tax due dates at September 14th, 2017, and March 8th, 2018. Item 10, Council Order 061-701, Request of the Deputy Finance Director for an order of the municipal offices on the application of real estate and personal property tax payments. This order will allow for the tax collector and treasurer to apply tax payments against the oldest unpaid tax bills. Item 11 is Council Order 061-702, Request of the Deputy Treasurer or Tax Collector to accept payments on tax-acquired timeshare units per the attached spreadsheet and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Item 12, Council Order 061-703, Request of the City Clerk for review and acceptance of the results from the City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation Municipal Referendum Election on June 13, 2017. Item 13, Council Order 061-704, Request of the City Assessor for abatement of taxes assessed to Heather Libby, Munitis Account 120008, Personal Property Tax Bill, in the amount of $42.48. Item 14, Council Order 061-705, Request of the City Assessor for abatement of taxes assessed to special children and friends, Munitis Account Number 3705, Personal Property Tax Bill, in the amount of $313.29. Is there any item that any council wishes to remove from that Consent Agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, move the adoption of Consent Agenda, items nine to 14 inclusive, as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Be unanimous. We're going to go into some public hearings for city lodging license and other types. Do we have any problems with any staff on these items? So they're all satisfied after the city requirements. In the event, we'll take -- Item 15, first on, is Douglas Keim and Rachel Wallace doing business at Homestead Motel and Cottages, 143 Bucksport Road, for renewal of the city lodging license. Any question from council? Public hearing is open. Any input from the public on the request for renewal of the Homestead Motel and Cottages? Seeing none, public hearing on that item is closed. Council action?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Second item, Martin &amp; Ware Incorporated doing business at Central Main Pyrotechnics, Pyro City Maine, doing business at Pyro City Maine Fireworks Store, 328 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city consumer fireworks retail sales license. Questions from council? Seeing none, public hearing is open. Any input on the request of the Mr. Martin &amp; Ware for the fireworks store? Seeing none, public hearing on that is closed. Council action?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All those in favor? Charles B. and Ariel L. Zucker doing business at Twilight Motel, 147 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. Questions for council? Seeing none, public hearing is now open. Any input from the public on the request of the Twilight Motel? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Pavita Vistra Young doing business at Thai Sana, I apologize. 324 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, liquor invicta, and renewal of a state restaurant license, Class III and IV malt vinous liquor license. Questions from council? Seeing none, public hearing is open. Any questions or input on the request of the Thai Sana for renewal? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. GC Pizza Hut LLC doing business at Pizza Hut, 211 High Street, for a new city Class C license, liquor invicta, and a state restaurant Class IV malt liquor license, transferred under state statutes from Capital Pizza Hut Incorporated to GC Pizza Hut LLC. Do we have a representative here from Pizza Hut?
Yes, sir.
You just state your name.
Paul Brown, sir.
Good. Thank you. Questions from council on the request of this? Seeing none, public hearing is open. Any input from the request of the Pizza Hut for renewal, or actually, new license? Seeing none, public hearing closed. Council action?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Last item, Manny's Greek Gil -- Grill, Grill, sorry. Manny's Greek Grill, LLC, 248 State Streets, Suite N, for a new city Class C license, liquor invicta, and a new state restaurant Class IV malt liquor license. And do we have a representative here from Manny's Grill?
We do. As of last.
And just state your name for the record, please.
Stacy Roguski and?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thanks for coming. Any questions? Any questions for the Manny's Grill from council? Yes.
I have one of staff. We've measured the distance to the church.
To the church?
Yeah. Isn't it 500 feet? It has? Okay. I didn't see any note of it, so that's why. We're voting. That's fine.
Good. Public hearing is now open. Any input from the public on the request for the new license for Manny's Greek Grill? Seeing none, public hearing closed. Action?
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
And welcome.
Good luck. You're in.
I'd like to try this. Okay. I think I can say this. Manny's Greek Grill.
Yes. Little problem with that the first time.
Five times in a row.
No, just one time.
Just out of curiosity, since you are sitting here, do you have a time when you'll be opening?
We're hoping toward the second week of July.
Good. Well, good luck with your venture. Thank you very much.
I've heard a lot of excitement about your scheduled opening in the months, people.
We're excited.
I'm excited.
Item 16, Council Order 061-706, Discussion and Action on Adopting a Resolve Declaring July 11th, 2017, as George Nixon Black Jr. Day in the City of Ellsworth. Mr. Fortier, you sponsored it. Do you want to?
I was approached by Joshua Torrance from the Woodlawn Museum. The resolution that you'll read will give all the whereas, so I'm not going to go through them all. But in conversation, knowing that the library's having a birthday this year, it's 120 years since Mr. Black graciously gave the city the Tisdale House for a library. We thought, he thought, and I agreed, that it would be appropriate for this body to declare George Nixon Black Jr.'s Day in Ellsworth, and I will let the resolve speak for itself.
Yes, sir.
Were you thinking of this being a one-time only, or?
Yeah.
Do we need action, or does that have to be the resolve? Would you like? Discussion and action.
You as mayor says that you can declare it yourself.
Just wanted to make sure you were happy, Mr. Fortier.
No. No, I mean?
So, Resolution to City Council, Proclamation of the Mayor and Council of Ellsworth Maine, George Nixon Black Jr. Day, July 11th, 2017. Whereas George Nixon Black Jr. was born in Ellsworth on July 11th, 1842, and whereas George Nixon Black Jr. was the last of three generations of the Black family to occupy Woodlawn, and whereas George Nixon Black Jr. gave the remodeled Tisdale House to the City of Ellsworth in 1897, with the enduring condition that the premises conveyed will always be used for a public library, and whereas the city has ensured its continued existence as a public library since 1897, and whereas George Nixon Black Jr. willed the Woodlawn Estate to the Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations in 1928, and whereas the Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations have maintained the estate for public use since 1929, and whereas Woodlawn's Park is open to the public from dawn to dusk every day of the year for Ellsworth residents and beyond, and whereas the mayor and the city council, on the behalf of the people of the City of Ellsworth, honor George Nixon Black's particular gifts and contributions to the city on the 120th anniversary of his gift of the Ellsworth Public Library's building, and be it resolved that July 11th, 2017, will be proclaimed George Nixon Black Jr. Day in the City of Ellsworth Maine, and be it further resolved that the City of Ellsworth residents be invited to enjoy the gifts of George Nixon Black Jr. by visiting the Ellsworth Public Library and the Woodlawn Estate. Do we have somebody here that received? Thank you very much.
If someone hasn't run the numbers, that makes George Nixon Black 175.
Item 17, Council Order 061-707, Request of the Finance Director to consider a lease agreement, contract for the Harbor concessions at the Ellsworth Harbor.
Hi. So, the Harbor Commission normally advertises Harbor concessions, RFP, each year. However, the past few years, we haven't, we've had a lot of experience, difficulty in filling the spot with quality candidates. A proposal and presentation from Harris's Harbor Side Takeout was recently provided to the Commission. They voted unanimously, and they are recommending approval from the city council. They're recommending a three-year lease at a rate of $100 per month for the first year, $200 a month for the second year, and $300 per month for the third year. I did attach a copy of the lease agreement.
Thank you. And we have a building in place now?
We do. Mr. Harris is here for any questions.
I was going to say, Mr. Harris, if you want to give us a quick synopsis, seeing how this is, you're involved with this to a certain extent. Do you have a projected time, if this is approved, to be open?
Well, I want to be open before the Fourth of July. The building's down there. It's set where it's going to be. Next step is electrical, which I have somebody working on for me right now. I'm not sure what that timeframe is. But we're basically ready to go. Once the electrical and the water are hooked up, then I have the equipment and all the vendors ready to deliver. We'll have ice cream, Gifford's Ice Cream. We'll have Pepsi products. We'll have hot dogs, salads, wraps, sandwiches. Hopefully, some of my mom's homemade pastries.
Which are famous.
We're not, we're not going to have any liquor. But, so, you know, I'm waiting for, the health department has got to give me the go-ahead once all the equipment's in place, and then, you know, from there, it should be good to go.
Good. Thank you. Questions from council? Mr. Harris? Thank you. We have no questions, and we hear a motion? Someone would like to deliver a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of Michael Harris for his business at the harbor. Anything else in there? Okay. Doing business at Harris's Harbor Side Takeout for a vending concession stand at the Ellsworth Harbor. At a price of $100 per month for the first year. This would be the 2017 season. $200 for the second year, and $300 for the third year. I authorize the city manager to sign the three-year lease agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
My pleasure.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from council? Mr. Crossway?
Mr. Chairman, I just wondered if anybody has any background checks on this preparation?
Extensive.
Yes, sir, we have.
Extensive, and he's actually quite easy to find. Yeah, we've had pretty poor history with vendors, and this is a great opportunity to have somebody local.
But just from the look of the building, he's already off to a good start.
Yes.
Much better. We have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Good luck, Mr. Harris.
One abstention, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw you.
No, he referenced me as his electrician, so.
Oh, that Fortier.
Do we want to consider this again?
One abstention. Item 18, Public Hearing and Enactment of an Emergency Moratorium Oneness and Primary Caregiver Operations Outside of the Primary Residence Upon the Request of the City Planner. Mr. Cole, are you presenting the synopsis of this?
You have the memorandum from the city planner outlining her request for a moratorium. The moratorium is on primary, or excuse me, primary marijuana caregivers operating outside of their primary residence. As background, and as the council knows, there was a referendum last fall that passed that is decriminalizing marijuana, and the rules are currently being constructed down in Augusta with a schedule of next winter or next spring, or sometime in the near future. Meanwhile, the council did zone relating to marijuana dispensaries. There are areas within the city that are off limits, such as the downtown, near schools, residential areas. However, the caregiver class, which is under the Medical Marijuana Act, historically had been viewed as strictly under the domain of the state of Maine. Therefore, we had not, in the past, regulated it on advice of council. However, there has been recently some movement, increasing number of marijuana caregivers who are looking to get out of their primary residence and into commercial facilities. That in association with the legalization, you know, many, many parties are positioning themselves for, you know, the commercialization of recreational marijuana. So this is kind of a hole in the fabric around our zoning and regulation of marijuana in the city. More recently, Maine Municipal Association, in an article from last fall, put forth the idea that, that cities do have a role in regulating marijuana from a, caregivers from a land use and a regulatory standpoint, from health and safety as well. And our legal counsel, John Hamer, agrees with that. So the purpose of the moratorium would be to take a timeout, a six-month moratorium, to look at medical marijuana caregivers and look at what land use policies, zoning, and regulatory rules should be in place. As Planner Gagnon notes, a city's not allowed to zone out these kinds of activities. They have a right to operate, but we can play a role in where they go within the community. And just like any other business, if there are issues related to safety, fire, other kinds of regulations can be put into place. This, this moratorium will not only give us a timeout to look at that, but it's part of a larger conversation around recreational marijuana and where the council would like to go in those regards. I think Planner Gagnon has laid it out pretty clearly. I think this is the right thing to do. This is not judging anything. This is just saying we need time to think this through and put the proper rules in place.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any comments or questions from council on this item fours? Seeing nobody anxious to comment at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing. There is a public hearing, which is now open, on any input from the public on the moratorium, on primary caregiver operations. If there is anybody who would like to speak, I'd ask you to go to the podium and state your name. To the podium and state your name, and tell us what you'd like.
My name is Rosanna Rich, and I'm a nurse and a healthcare provider, and I've had a business in Ellsworth for 10 years, and now I've just moved here. And I understand prudent action and wanting to look at all aspects of this issue, and I would just ask the council, perhaps, to consider involving some of these caregivers in making some of these recommendations. I think as a healthcare provider, I'm very concerned about people having access to something that is helpful and compassionate compared to some of the other alternatives. So I just wanted to offer that, and maybe there is some cooperative action that can take place.
There will be some discussions, and there will be workshops held on this as the time goes on, but part of what we're working now is the state hasn't made any rules. They haven't said what's going to be allowed and the different direction they're going to, so we're kind of working with that. But at the time we do set ordinances, there will be discussions in open forum here, and there will be some workshops, and the public is more than welcome to come and to place, give us their thoughts and directions, and we always take it into consideration. We do listen.
Good. I'm glad to hear that, now that I'm a resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from public? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Motion? On the request of the planner for the moratorium.
Mr. Chairman, move to oppose or enact the moratorium on primary caregiver operations outside the primary residence as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We have a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion before I call for a vote?
Just one comment, so there won't be any gray area. Number four bullet is effective as of the date of passage, so it's now.
If it passes, it's in. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 18, 19, Council Order 061-708, Appointment of the City Officials by the City Council. Motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Moving seconded. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 20, 061-709, Approval of the City Manager's Appointments. Give a motion?
Move approval, if presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 21, Council Order 061-710, Request of the Deputy Finance Director to set the interest rate on overdue taxes. Good evening.
Good evening. This is an annual request to set the interest rate on overdue taxes per Maine statute. The maximum rate set by the state is 7%. For the past three years, the city council has set the rate at 5%. For the past three years, the city council has set the rate at 5%. I'm asking the council to determine a rate that is no more than 7%.
Thank you. Well, what would we like for a rate? It's been five for the last several years. Would we like to stay at that, or?
I'd like to stay at that. I would agree.
Sounds good.
Five is good.
Seems consensus is to stay at 5%. If that's the case, maybe somebody would make a motion?
Some would.
Second. Moving seconded. All those in favor? Item 22, public hearing in action on the budget resolutions for fiscal year 2018. Mr. Cole, earlier at the finance committee meeting, you asked that perhaps we could table it, and today you and I spoke, and I spoke with Ms. Moak, and both of you now feel that we just as well enact and maybe perhaps later adjust if needed when the state's done with theirs?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chair. As you know, most of the state funding is within the school budget, and that budget's already been passed. And even though there may be some uncertainty on the municipal side, we feel that if necessary, we can come back to the council and make any adjustments.
Counsel comment? Long and hard, and we set the agreement, got to where we rather, this is another one of those, we all bounced it back and forth, the pieces and parts of we like, the pieces and parts of we don't like. Seeing no comments from council, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing on the action for our budget resolution for fiscal year 2018. Is there any member of the public which would like to comment on that? Seeing none. We have the budget before us. We held the public hearing, no comments. Is there a motion from somebody in the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moore here.
I would have to agree with your previous comment that there's stuff in here that I don't like, there's stuff in here I do like, there's stuff in here all of us didn't want to cut. There's projects that we'd like to get going on as a city that we can't because of our desire to keep our mill rate as low as we can. That being said, I think, I don't think there's any fat in this budget. In fact, I think it's pretty scrawny, and I would move approval of the budget as presented.
Do I have a second?
Just a second. I'm sorry, there's some stuff we have to read into that.
The resolves.
The resolves.
Resolve.
Trying to get to it. Don't have paper copy.
Just for the be hereby resolved.
On the first page.
Yep.
And then the additional items.
The budget items, yeah.
Just that first resolved.
You got them here?
Then there's...
If you've got it right there in hard copy, go ahead and read it in.
Adoption of budget for fiscal year 2018, be it hereby resolved, sum of $19,607,150, which constitutes the estimated requirements of the various city accounts for fiscal year 2018 based on the budget submitted by the city manager as provided by the charter. Be raised assessments upon the inhabitants of the city of Ellsworth and upon the estates of non-resident proprietors with the city for the present municipal year, and that the sums hereby appropriated, in addition to sums as otherwise provided, the amount for each purpose being specified, and then the account appropriation is all listed. And then the following departments, I need that resolved too.
Yes, sir.
Yep. It's further resolved, the city of Ellsworth, city council approves the budgets for the following departments in the amount specified. Cap improvements budget is $9,9,600. Ellsworth Public Library budget, $694,224. Water Department budget, $1,179,500. Actually, the total water department is $1,225,461. Waste water treatment plant budget total is $1,831,670.
Set.
Second.
And we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the budget? It is unanimous. Have the year down. Item 23, council order 061711, request of the finance director, deputy city manager to accept payments on 330 Water Street, map 134, lot 67, triple zero, triple zero, and 334 Water Street, map 134, lot 067.
67, yes.
Triple zero, triple zero, and to authorize the city manager to release said properties through municipal quitclaim deeds. Yes?
The city foreclosed on a property located on 330 Water Street on December 12th. The city had met all of its legal requirements and obligations for notifying that property owner that it was getting ready to foreclose. We sent out the 30-day redemption notices, and we didn't, still didn't receive payment. As part of our tax-acquired property ordinance, the council has the option to retain this property. This item was discussed at finance committee. We had thought originally that we may want to retain this property for future development. In the meantime, Mr. Fang, who previously owned this property, had contacted the city with his attorney and said that he is willing to pay for all of the taxes, back due taxes, and then further discussion we had with the council that it was determined that the city would not like to retain this property. So I'm asking you to accept his payments as well as deed it back to him.
He has not paid anything at this point?
No, sir.
Okay, but he is obligated to pay the city balance, $13,172,18 total?
Yes.
All taxes and fees.
Including water and wastewater.
I'm not sure of the circumstance of why he hasn't paid it, whether we met our due diligence, but I'm not sure of what had happened. Questions from council on the request of the deputy city manager, finance director?
Do we know when he intend, I'm so sorry.
Dawn?
Do we know when he intends to pay?
It'd be a requirement of dating over the property or saving the funds same time. Correct?
Correct.
Ms. Moak, have we done this before beyond the deadline?
We have.
So this is not new ground?
No. I can't think of anyone off the top of my head, but I know that we've done this before.
It's happened more than once in the past where different circumstances brought us to this point.
Was this a, was this a, I'll call it a medical emergency, the reason they weren't paid, or was this just?
Not sure.
We don't ask those questions, and we've been in contact with the attorneys and...
Our attorneys as well.
...our attorneys and...
And my last question. The end of Dean Street, I know was fairly narrow. At some point, I would guess that will be widened for whatever reason. Is there a reason to keep a, a strip of land right there along Dean Street, along the edge of that property, so that we don't have to go back in, whether it's one years or, one year or 10 years, to go back and purchase that? Since we own it now?
Mr. Ford here.
We've had a discussion on that, and I had the same idea. And the comment was, until we have a concrete plan, it's best for the city to let it go and then take it eminent domain, just what we need. Because then you don't negotiate a price. It's set.
And also, I think there's some issues with title perhaps.
There's no way to change the deed and change...
Gives us a clean title to do it that way with the eminent domain and back to the owner because the tax-acquired properties aren't always...
Yeah. They're a clean title.
Our attorney advised us to have merchantable title. You would actually have to go to court, and if you have someone disputing you, it becomes costly and can drag on, and frankly, the optics of it might not necessarily look good. So our legal counsel, you know, advised that we should go ahead and, and, you know, resolve this dispute.
Okay.
And later, if we need a, a strip take to do this, then we negotiate it on that basis or exercise eminent domain. But that's out in the future when we look at rebuilding that room.
Answer it somewhat, Mr. Blanchett.
It, it answers it, but it, it's still, there was plenty of time to pay this.
Oh, yes.
And it just leaves somewhat solid taste in there.
Yeah, I don't think there's any argument in that. Actually, we're not sure of the details. Mr. Beatham?
Really? Question I would have is, should we put some time, a type of timeframe on it, considering that it went through foreclosure, which is a fairly long process? Because I mean, he could drag this out and not pay the taxes for another year. I mean, so...
Yeah, foreclosure process is what, three years, I think? Probably from start to finish?
Two and a half.
Two and a half to three years, so there was plenty of time to redeem it. I agree with you. In the, in your motion, you could put that.
Yeah, don't do that.
You can do anything about it.
Yeah, I could do that. Move to approve the request of the finance director, deputy city manager to accept payments on 330 Water Street, map 134, lot 0670000000, and 134 Water Street, map 134, 06700000000. And to authorize the city manager to accept said, release said properties through a quit claim deed with a timeframe of 90 days?
Is 90 too much, or 60 more acceptable, you think?
I was actually going to say 30, so 60 days is...
Counselor, if in that motion, perhaps you could add contingent on receipt of all past taxes and fees within 60 days, or perhaps word it that way.
So move.
Okay.
Just to make it crystal clear.
60 days.
Just to make it crystal clear, this is contingent on receipt.
Yep, we understand that.
Then I'd second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any, Mr. Crossway?
Just a clarification, that second lot, or the second piece of that parcel, is it 134 Water Street or 334 Water Street?
334 Water Street.
All right, thank you.
And map 134, yeah.
And then map 134.
Which was odd because the lot numbers are the same.
Yeah, I just realized that.
But the two pieces of property are 330 and 334 Water Street. Further questions?
Just a comment, this isn't chump change. This is $12,500 of in arrears, so this is, this is good to get it back on the tax rolls.
Yes.
And to get the money.
Yep.
Any further questions?
Just one other comment. When we take property, the city takes possession of property every December. They're given 30 days, the current owner is then given 30 days to redeem everything.
30 to 45 days prior to the foreclosure, we, they're allowed to play within that tax year that we're foreclosing on, and then once that date goes by, there's a 30-day redemption period where they have to pay all taxes for the past three years. Everything has to be current.
Then, then I don't understand if there's a 30-day redemption period for them, why we're making an exception and doubling it for this property. They've already had that 30-day redemption this past December. I don't know why we're being so generous.
Sometimes paperwork and things don't take happen that quickly, that's all.
Counselor, I would add that our attorney has advised us that even though we have possession of the property, as you will recall, there was some discussion about renting out the facility, and we were advised against doing that because when we get involved in the active use of the property, we go into the chain of ownership, and you know, you can be held responsible in chain of ownership from anything, from environmental issues to anything else. The fact is, is that to get merchantable title, to sell the property or use it, or whatever you want to do with it, you have to go to court. And, and parties can dispute it, and if you got a comber in the wrong place, you know, you could be found that you didn't go through the due process. So that's an exaggeration, obviously, but you know...
As far as the, the time, the time you get an attorney involved, paperwork going back to you, well, 60 days is not unusual, so...
Yeah.
It's better than two and a half years, Mr. Blanchett.
Yeah.
Okay? Mr. Ford here.
And Mr. Cole brought up an important part, too. We could be sent in the line of command, a chain of command for EPA cleanup down there. Because we all know that entire place has been flooded for years of great neinight.
Yeah.
It used to be the Dennis Beverick Bottling Plant.
Many of the older members of this council might remember this.
Sounds like if we get this money back, we'll be able to pay the attorney at least.
Yeah, it sounds great. Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Blanchett opposed, motion carries. Item 24, public hearing in action on council order 061712, authorization for tax anticipation borrowing of $2 million with some very good rates. Ms. Moak?
Yes, so on June 13th, the city accepted the bids for the tax anticipation note. The proceeds of this tan will be used for financing governmental activities and obligations of the city in anticipation of funds to be raised by taxation. In preparation of this tan, I do a cash analysis to determine the correct amount that we should get for the year. It was based, this year is based on $2 million, I think would be the best fit for the cash needs for the city. We received bids from five different local banks. We had some great rates, 1.19% was the low bid. As you can see in your packet of information, Metri Savings Bank did offer a rate of 1.16%, but they were saying we'd need to put $250,000 in a deposit account. But based on the rates that we get at the first, I thought it would be better just to go with the 1.19% rate.
Questions for the finance director, hat of Ms. Moak? Seeing none, we'll hold a public hearing. Any input from the public on the tax anticipation note? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Council action?
Move toward the tax anticipation note, the first, at interest rate of 1.19% for $2 million tan as presented.
Second. Moving seconded. Discussion? All those in favor? Item 25, council order 061713, request of the deputy city manager or finance director to award a contract for the Nolton Park mowing and grounds maintenance services. Yes?
So this current fiscal year, the city hired Atlantic Landscape for the Nolton Park mowing and grounds maintenance. That was to ensure the warranty on the grounds for that first year. For FY 2018, I did send out an RFP. We sent it out to four vendors. This would include mowing, path edging, mulching, weeding, environmental weed and pest control, fertilizing, and the spring and fall cleanup. We did receive two bids, one from Dr. Greenleaf and Goodall Landscaping. We did receive a bid from a vendor, but it was late, so in order to, you know, they got disqualified from the RFP process. I have all the information in your backup packets, and I'm just asking the council to award the contract.
Thank you. Council discussion on this request. I see that Goodall uses the...
Natural Lawn Care?
Yeah, the Natural Lawn Care. I was trying to think of a cute little term, but yeah, the Natural Lawn Care, which is the more environmentally friendly and human-friendly fertilizing method. And also does seem to be a pretty stable and capable company by their bid process documents. Pretty quiet. Any comments? Any comments from counsel, or further discussion?
Without digging into this big book, the nineteen-seven is well within the budgeted amount for that project.
Yes, I believe we've budgeted twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand.
Well, Ms. Chairman, we've had this discussion during finance and looking at other projects in the city. I think for a couple of three thousand, I guess it's almost five, five thousand dollars, well within budget, that we need to start looking at the environmentally friendly stuff where our kids play. I think we'd be thrown on a rail and boiling oil and run out of town if we gave up this opportunity to do the environmentally right thing.
For me personally.
I totally agree, Mr. Fordy. Do you formulate a motion on that?
I'm trying to get to it on my iPad, isn't loading quick enough.
I would love to present a motion on that.
Good, go right ahead.
I move to approve the request of the Deputy City Manager or Finance Director to award Nolton Park mowing and grounds maintenance services contract to Goodall Landscaping per the attached pricing.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, one, I think for the record, we need to make sure people understand that it is not the lowest bid.
No.
It's not the lowest. It's not the lowest bid. Neither one of them are incapable of doing that project. It's, to me, it's straight affordable environmental concerns. If it was twenty-eight thousand, I'd think about it. But it's...
I think that's all, we're totally in agreement with that, especially the place it's as active as it is, with as many children and adults there. Move, second. Any further discussion? Mr. Blanchett.
Just a comment. It isn't so much, for me, it isn't so much the environmental aspect of it, it's the kids. The more and more and more that I've been studying health in the last two or three years, and knowing the, what different fertilizers, different chemicals can do to the human body, to put kids into that realm is just, to me, unconscionable. And I'll stick with the natural.
So I'm assuming when I call for a vote now, all those in favor, the jury? Yes? Yes? Unanimous. Unanimous.
I'm waiting for the attitude to fall.
Councilor 061714 requested the City Manager to pave the Union River for Innovation Parking Lot at an estimated cost of $35,000. We've had several designs fall back and forth, and I assume that the one in front of us is your final? Is that your final answer, Mr. Cole?
No, 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 no. This is from the planning board. This shows the parking layout that was submitted as part of the site plan. And the point here was that the planning board approved this with thirteen parking spots. Because the question had come up, are we going to lose capacity as a result of this project? And according to the Public Works Director, not only are we not going to lose capacity, but we should be able to add a minimum of three more slots with the improvements we're anticipating. I sent out to you Friday a modified sketch plan, concept plan, that showed two changes to what went out on your packet. First, closing off Water Street entirely. We had included an enter-only entrance off Water Street. And after some input, it was, it was the consensus that we should just close that off entirely and rely on the entryway into Harbor Drive to get to the facility and park around the facility. Secondly, this, the new plan that was sent to you on Friday shows a catch basin and a drainage pipe out to the Union River to take care of the runoff. Bottom line is that the paving estimate is just under 25,000. That has not changed. Originally, based upon the original sketch plan and using granite curbing, the cost was going to be just under $15,000 to do curbing. On further discussion, to make the additional improvements we have discussed in the Finance Committee, we're now proposing to do concrete curbing. Public Works Director Wilson, if you could come up, please. I know you've got updated quotes on what it would cost. In addition to the 25,000 approximately from Lane, what, you're now talking granite, excuse me, concrete curbing of approximately...
Approximately around 6,200. It's one-third the cost of granite. I just called up Jay at Deere Go Slip Phones and told me his estimate. Me and Mickey figured it out and do all the curbing with the little island up across the front. So you've got a, whatever you want to call it. Cars won't drive up over just one piece of curb in there, you've got a place to get stuck on.
That happens.
That way we can catch them.
That happens.
Yes.
I said with a spike strip across the...
Yes, it is, yeah. We can put that in the harbor so they slow down going in.
And then the additional cost of a catch basin, pipe, another thousand?
Yeah, a thousand to fifteen hundred.
So if you add that all up, it's in the, that's about 32, 33,000? So actually, our original request of 35,000, an up-to-figure, I would suggest, if you're in favor of doing this, go to an up-to-figure of 35,000 to make these improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Blanchett?
The handicap parking spot in the, what, the Water Street front of the building? To get into it, you drive into Harbor Drive into the park, take a left into towards the building.
That's correct, yeah.
More or less drive the length of the building and then park out front. If there's no entrance off of Water Street, how do they get that van turned around, a vehicle, whatever it may be?
The inside parking lot, I tried it with my truck, and you'd be able to back, back down and turn and come out. The other one, you're going to have to do probably a two-point back up. You're going to have to back up, go forward, back up again.
And in the wintertime, when there's snowbanks?
Same thing as any parking lot.
Does it become a four or five point?
Probably more than that.
That's where the ramp is, isn't it, on the front?
Yes, but they're talking later on, change the ramp to come the other way.
And we can also change the handicap parking spot that time if that needs to happen. It's a paint job on the asphalt.
Kind of what I'm thinking that this one isn't, yeah, it might work out for June, July, and August, so to speak.
No, it's where the ramp is, though. So the spot needs to be there for easy access for folks that need the ramp. But if we change the ramp, at that time, we'll change the parking spot, the paint job on the asphalt.
Other than that, I'm fine.
All right, any further questions? Counsel action on this request?
Well, we've got a motion that is not, not accurate now, because it includes granite curbing. So I would move to authorize the use of approximately $35,000 from unassigned fund balance for paving and curbing the Union River Center for Innovation Parking Lot, and increase the city's paving agreement by $25,000 for the lane construction from an amount not to exceed 339,000. Instead of the original, now will be 364,000. And approve cement curbing with Deere Go Slip forms in that motion.
Perfect. Motion, second. Any further questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-seven, Councilor 061715, requested the City Manager to approve naming the remaining portion of old Route 179 as Falls Court. That's the time just between behind Sunrise Glass to the railroad tracks, the new short street, thanks to the road constructions. Now, Mr. Manager, it's your request.
That is my request.
Sorry.
He was lobbying me.
Sorry. As you know, with the reconfiguring of Route 179 to now square up to Shore Road, there's a small segment of former 179 that is an orphan, and we need to give it a name for address purposes, 911 purposes. There are five properties on this segment, include Sunrise Glass, Falls Redemption, and some residential properties there. I went to the city assessor, who's in charge of these things, and said, just come back with a recommendation. He spoke with others on the staff. They came back with the name Falls Court, given it's Ellsworth Falls, and it is a short segment. So Falls Court seems to fit the bill. The five property owners were notified that that was the city's intention, and asked if they had any input. And only one gave input and didn't have an objection to the name. So I'd recommend we go forward with Falls Court.
Thank you for that presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Why does it have to change?
Because the new Route 179 comes out at the intersection with Shore Road.
Yes.
So now there's a segment that's been left behind. When the taillights from DOT are leaving town, that will now be a town road. So it needs to be given a name, identification, and...
It was always North Street. Why can't North Street still begin where this Falls Court is and run all the way up?
That question was asked there. That would cause quite a bit of confusion. Now, the road coming down, North Street and 179, you know, are co-terminals. One is the city identification, the other's state identification. For, for identity purposes, that segment, now that goes down to, down to the intersection, is the beginning of the road.
That can be the beginning of 179, but North Street could still run to the end, so people don't have to change their address.
The two roads are identified together, I think it would cause confusion.
I think it's back to 911, the lettering.
Right. It would be a violation of the state's E-909 naming convention. We've had this before, but we've wanted to do it, and it's...
We changed the ending of the road, and that leaves us as an orphan. And for safety, for public, excuse me, for public safety, then it gets its own name.
And it no longer looks like part of the road. You know, the road now goes straight from the intersection out, and it looks like a dog leg off there.
Ms. Chairman, my fear on that road, that little Falls Court, is how with the tractor trailers carrying redemption bottles going to get in and out of there? I think it was poor design for the business activity that goes on in that little redemption center.
It's a pretty sharp turn.
And I fear we're going to put them out of business. Or DOT is where...
I'm sure that gentleman driving that 52-foot box will have a sweet time getting in there. Mr. Fordy.
In February.
God, it won't be me.
Yeah.
Any further questions on this?
No.
Well, maybe have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the City Manager to name the remaining portion of old Route 179 as Falls Court.
Second. All those in favor? I think that'd be unanimous. Councilor 061716 requested the Deputy City Manager for discussion and action on road improvements and acceptance of Alexis Way. Good evening again.
I monopolized this meeting. The residents of Deer Meadows Subdivision have petitioned the city to accept the road Alexis Way as a city street. Because this road doesn't meet the city's road acceptance standards, they're asking the city to bring the road up to the city's standards and reimburse the city for the improvements through a supplemental tax assessment. The city asked Andrew McCullough to take a look at the property and determine the needs for that road. He determined that there would be needs of fine grading, shoulder and ditch work, as well as paving. The total cost for the upgrades would be about 88,500. We'd also have some additional fees for attorneys, as well as engineering costs. According to the city's attorney, there is a statutory provision that allows the city to make improvements to a private road and to assess a supplemental tax up to two-thirds of the cost if the majority of the butters of the street file a written petition for the improvements. The first step in this process is to bring it to council. They petitioned, and this would allow them to, for us to keep moving forward. As part of this process, when the butters sign the agreement, they will be required to put a third down on those construction costs. And then the two-thirds would, over a period of five years, would be collected through this assessment. I have Brian Hennigan here, who created the subdivision, in case there's any questions on the actual road or any... He also represents the subdivision and the road association, correct?
I don't actually represent that section. I'm just, I'm the original...
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we have to have him come up here, sorry.
If you've got some comment, please go to the podium so we can see you and hear.
Yep, so I'm Brian.
Good evening.
Yes, I did the subdivision originally. I'm not a, I'm a member of the association, but I'm not, I guess, an owner of the road. So the, how to explain it best, I guess? So right now, I guess, I own the LLC, which actually does own the road. So I am the owner of the road, I guess, if you will. So I guess that's...
Thank you. We've had the, I think, this is step two. This was started years ago?
About a year ago. We've been kind of working through, working with the attorneys.
To get to this point.
Correct.
Questions from counsel? Yes, ma'am.
I just have to say, I, so far in this, I know that, you know, in talking with our planner, that she feels and others feel that it's a good idea to, for the city to take on these private roads, to keep them at a certain standard, that it's better for development. But I still am not sold. I am against taking on all these private roads that we have to pay to maintain and keep up. I don't, I don't see the logic or the benefit to the city to take on these costs. So that's just, that's my opinion. They were built as private roads. People bought the developments, the housing, you know, their pieces as private roads, and with the understanding that they were going to have to maintain them. And I just, I don't see that we already have a hard time maintaining the roads that we have, and we're taking on more. I'm not in favor of this.
That's all part of growth and expansion, and you've gained that whether you like them or not. Hopefully, the tax benefit will offset some of it. Mr. Moore?
I noticed in the third paragraph, it made a reference to a majority...
Yes.
Of the butters on this road, I assume. Wasn't there once a requirement that everyone had to?
I think so. And actually, I think everyone did sign.
Except one, which then is absorbed by the remaining owner. So that one parcel, each person would have a percentage of that one parcel.
So the non-signing party's share is divided amongst those that signed.
Correct.
And that's already agreed upon?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Part of that. So the cost is still covered, but...
I was wondering how they're going to deal with somebody who didn't...
That's road associations, and it's part of the reason, get away from that. And this is basically, I think, step two per se. We started that initially, agreed upon, to get to this point, the council has. And they've done the due diligence and gotten to this point in time to ask us.
I can support it, then.
Mr. Fordy?
Ms. Chairman, I've done a couple houses on that road, and it is standing up very well for dirt road. Got some erosion problems down the end, which the engineer has shown us a fix for. The one thing I noticed, I'd caution you on the, what's the name of the thing I'm looking at? The witness sheet that everybody has to sign. We've got some 13-digit tax account numbers there. Ours are only 12. Like Cormier... Like Cormier, 030028006, next one down, Harrington. Just check them, because I noticed that some of them have 13-digit...
This was drafted by, this was drafted by the attorney.
Yeah, yeah, and that's why...
So, we would double-check this.
Yep. I see attorneys don't make mistakes, should be a problem.
I think it's a good project, and I think it'll, I think it'll make the neighborhood nice.
We've agreed initially, and they've moved on at this point, so. Any further questions from counsel? If not, maybe have a motion?
I know this is a very wordy, lengthy order, but it's exactly how it was for the Fieldstone Way.
Mr. Chairman, move to accept the petition of the residents of Deer Meadows Subdivision to pursue acceptance of Alexis Way as a public road, in which cost estimates and other necessary documentation will be provided for the city council to take on the project and be compensated by a tax assessment to the members of the association. Further, move to direct the city manager or designate to prepare proposed deeds and execute a timetable and financing plan in the form of an agreement with the abutters. This order does not guarantee acceptance of the road. However, the city anticipates that it will accept the road, provided all necessary and appropriate conditions are met. The city reserves the right not to accept the road as a public way for cars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Ms. Ily, Hudson opposed, motion carries. Item 29, Council Order 061-717, Request of the Finance Director to withdraw up to $20,000 from the Capital Reserve for Nolton Park improvements.
Still here.
Yes.
So, the Nolton Park has had some necessary maintenance upgrades, including the replacement of the wood chips, as well as seeding and loaming the, not the slash, the ice rink area. In order to save costs, the wood chips were not replaced during the construction of Nolton Park, but however, we're seeing that there are many areas that were bare, and some cement posts were visible. This has turned into a liability issue. This past fall, an area at Nolton Park was leveled in order to have an adequate surface for the ice rink, for aesthetic purposes, and for us to meet the requirements for green space at Nolton Park that was set by the DEP. We would like to have that area loamed and reseated. Mickey and I have been working on obtaining some estimates for these upgrades, so I'm assuming it's going to be about $15,000 to $20,000, masing to have that money removed from the city's capital reserve. That account currently has $193,868.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. You were talking about loaming and reseeding the area where the, where the ice rink was?
Yes.
So, is this something that would have to be done every year, if the ice rink stays?
No, now that it's level, and you'd put the loam on level, and there may be some dips in there, but it should be fine.
Okay, all right.
In fact, the first year we did it there, when we took up the ice rink, the grass underneath it was gorgeous.
Greener than the rest of the...
It was green, green. Ms. Chairman, I have one question of the Deputy City Manager or Finance Director. Does these financial numbers include the second load of wood chips?
It would, it's fine.
It will be, okay. I know that was decided after this was put together.
That was $1,800 for the second.
It was, and these numbers also included what we thought were going to have to, we'd have to pay to have somebody spread them, which was about $5,000, but our Public Works Department came through and were able to help us.
Came in, rescued it, did it in record time.
They certainly did. Thank you, thank you.
Those sunshiny faces back there.
That's what you learn.
Any further discussion? Motion, please?
Move to approve the request of the Finance Director, withdraw up to $20,000 from the Capital Reserve account for Nolton Park improvements.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor? Make that be unanimous.
Move adjourned.
Do I have a second on that one?
Second.
Third.
And we have, all those in favor?
Fifth.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.